Rise for a moment of silence, Father of the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Clapper, could you please call the board?
Chairman Di Maria.
Here.
Vice Chairman Albrecht.
Here.
Mr. Bushnell.
Here.
Mrs. Purdy.
Here.
Mrs. Kiefer.
Here.
Mrs. Sebeski.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Student liaisons, Ms. Spall.
Here.
Mr. Whedon.
Here.
Corrections or additions to the agenda?
Yes, we have a personnel addendum to the consent agenda.
Thank you. Superintendent's announcements and spotlights.
Yes, we have a school, I think, here that we need to recognize.
Thank you, Dr. McGurk, Chairman Di Maria, other members of the board. Hello to everyone that is here tonight. I will see if you can guess which school I'm honoring since I'm wearing red tonight. But we do have a very, very exciting spotlight for tonight, and I'm very honored to be able to present them to you. Many of you may have heard the news, but in case you have not, Williams Elementary School has been recognized nationally as a high-performing urban school. Yes. Williams is one of only 24 schools nationwide to receive the 2015 National Excellence in Urban Education Award. The recognition, which was presented by the National Center for Urban Schools Transformation, cites schools across the country that achieve impressive academic results in areas such as curricular rigor, instructional effectiveness, relational quality, and continuous improvement efforts across all demographic groups served. Williams now joins an elite group of 112 schools nationally, and only two schools in Virginia that have been recognized for this award. Williams was chosen as a finalist for the award last December. All finalists received a comprehensive site visit from an evaluation team of researchers and practitioners. The national team of experts focused on whether the school was generating strong test results, high rates of attendance, and excellent student behavior. Additionally, the award recipients must demonstrate that they do not have selective admission policies, and their test results for every demographic group of students must be better than the state average for students. As a bronze award winner, Williams has been invited to share the school's successes at the U.S. 2015 National Symposium on High-Performing Urban Schools Ceremony, which will be held next month in Dallas, Texas. Each winning school will receive $2,500. Tonight, the Williams principal, Mr. Dave Rupert, is here along with several members of his office staff and grade level and department chairs. I'm going to ask that they would come and join us. Mr. Rupert, Betty Gary, Kelly Sheldon, Albagaza, Allison Scott, Liz Ringer, Don Moore, Carrie Bland, Aileen Bayless, Kim Hayden, Stephanie Fisher, Laura Perez, Joy Wilson, Betty Priliman, and Miriam Castaneda. Mr. Chairman, did you have anything you want to say? Since it's a national award, I'll let you go ahead.
I think we're out to make two of those.
Yeah, we'll get you all together. Dave, you want to get in the back? What else you got over here by the white, by the screen? That'd be better. We've got a little time, go ahead.
Who's the kindergarten teacher? They gotta be the best ones shepherding cats.
Dave's looking for a job at Lifetouch, you know, to take his school pictures. Can you see everybody?
I think so.
Okay.
Two, three.
That's a good picture.
One more time, one, two, three.
You all look great. Congratulations to you.
Before we continue, I want everybody on camera, everybody here knows, but everybody at home might have missed it. If I'm not mistaken, it's one of 24 schools in the nation. That, I mean, just think of that. That's less than half a school per state. Right?
Yes.
All right, math is not my... So we're going to make the Myco kids leave?
You could say one school for every two states.
Well, no, trust me, in my world, they're Myco kids.
You could say one school for every two states.
I could have said more, I could have said it the way I did.
He has something to say.
I'd rather just watch, they're more fun. It's truly incredible what you all have accomplished with the challenges that you have, and just to be a success is spectacular. But this is above and beyond. I mean, this is what we're shooting for across our entire district, and our other schools are doing great, and you guys are leaving everybody in the dust, and they're still doing great. It's just incredible, I'm, as my, I'm not quite that young, but as my home school with my daughters, there is, everybody, I think everybody knows, there's an extra sense of pride in Williams, and this just enhances it. It's just so incredible that one of our schools was able to do this, and it happened to be my home school. I'm so proud of all of you, those of you that were there, the two of you that were there when I was there. Well, I just can't believe, because they're both very young, at least one of them is. And how, well, yeah, but you do your, you know, she's the youngest one we've got right there. I'm just so overly proud of you, and proud of our school, and proud of our system, proud of your staff and central office staff as well, everybody, because you can't do this alone, and you've had support from current administration, past administration. You should be very proud of you, because we certainly are. Thank you all very much. Does anybody else want to say anything to Williams right now? Because I think, they're probably going to want to leave, aren't you? You don't have to, but it just seems that way after spotlight, everybody bolts out of here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to say a couple of comments. First of all, congratulations. It's just unbelievable to watch this. I just wanted to say I had the benefit, as a member of the superintendent's first cohort of the Manassas City Public Schools Parent Community Leadership Academy, had the honor of coming by your school, touring it, seeing how bright it was, seeing the smiles, seeing the engagement. Along with many of the other schools in the division, we had the benefit of visiting. But I just wanted to say, you know, my time there was well-spent, instilled even more pride in Williams and our school system, so thank you and congratulations.
Anyone else?
Sure. People are quick to criticize and often loathe to give kudos to people who do a great job, and Tim said it well, but I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for all the work that you do. You've done a great job not only making Williams stand out and be a shining light, but the city of Manassas, because when you do great, it reflects on all of us. So keep doing what you're doing and know that your work is truly appreciated, and thank you very much.
I guess we're doing board comments.
You don't have to.
No, I...
Just this part.
I actually had it prepared for my board comments, so I'll just jump these up. One of the things that I just got so tickled about, and I don't remember, so you'll have to help me how long ago it was, but we came in there, and one of the first things we were greeted with for one of the special events was they held up these big signs. We're in an elementary school, and the big sign had the word efficacy, and its definition underneath, and I'm sitting there going, they're elementary school kids, and the kids know exactly what that word meant. And so that's always stuck in my mind, because that, to me, is sort of exactly what is special about Williams. You guys aren't afraid to just totally rush and grab for excellence, because, I mean, you set the bar here, and you told the kids they could do it, and they're the ones that told me what the definition of efficacy was, so well-deserved, and again, as Sanford says, keep doing what you're doing. That's what we want for our kids.
Do you have something? I know you do. Go ahead. No, go ahead, yes, ma'am.
I just want to say, congratulations, and how proud I am of the work that you all have done there for many years, and this is an award that's very much deserved by, because of what you all do there every day, for every student in that building, which comes to you, I know some with more challenges than others, but that doesn't matter. All children at Williams are served and served well, and this award recognizes all of that hard work that you all do every single day, and I just can't be more proud of all of you, and those of you that even weren't able to be here tonight. So, Mr. Rupert, please let your staff know how very excited we are for them, that their hard work is being recognized, not just by this board, but on a national level, as Mr. Di Maria said, only a half a school per state got to have.
Less than.
Less than half a state, less than half a school per state. Anyway, congratulations.
Robert? So I won't try the math, but this is an award given to, and there's some key words, cities, urban jurisdictions, one of 24 in the whole country, and I'm not going to guess how many thousands or tens of thousands of elementary schools there are that meet that criteria. And Mr. Williams is right, when he talks about, all too often, everybody goes negative, and public education especially, public service in general, are constantly chided for not getting it right. Couple of years ago, some of you may recall, I talked about why Manassas. Folks, this is it. This is why Manassas. So, to the members, to the parents who are listening, to the parents who aren't listening, this is the message we need to get out, because you all are representing us well, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. And one other thing, thankfully for us, we have our city councilman, who is the liaison to the schools, Mr. Ken Elston. We appreciate you being here, and lucky you, you get to be here while these fine folks are here, and you can pass that on to city council, what a wonderful, wonderful job our schools are doing. Thank you for being here, sir. Thank you all very much. Congratulations. Now the exciting part. Board committee reports. Academics. Mr. Williams.
Thank you. The academic committee met about an hour ago, and we discussed the 2016-2017 calendar, which will be coming here shortly. We also talked about the code of conduct, which will be coming to the board soon as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Sebeski, policy.
Yes, sir, thank you. Policy committee will meet on Tuesday, May the 5th, at 11 o'clock at Central Office. At the next meeting, there'll be books available to the members of the committee to start to review the policies that were updated by V S B A, as well as policies that need to be updated to reflect current needs and practices of the division, and that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Education support. Mr. Robert?
We have not had a committee meeting, but we all did get to shovel some dirt recently, and anyone who drives by Tudor through Old Town is probably seeing some bulldozers, and I think that speaks for the report itself.
Thank you, sir. Finance and personnel, we didn't, you have anything for finance, Mr. Bushnell?
Other than the presentation Mr. Bushnell made to the joint meeting last week.
Right.
So we have presented formally the school board budget to city council.
Thank you, sir. Board member comments. Ms. Spall, we'll start with you.
I just want...
Did I catch off guard?
Sorry.
That's what I was looking for.
I'd just like to encourage you all to make it up to the Seussical Musical this Thursday, Friday, Thursday and Friday at 7:00 and Saturday at 2:00 and 7:00.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Whedon?
Although, I'd just like to say welcome back from spring break, and I'd also like to congratulate Jace Moore for being crowned Mr. Osborne this past Saturday, and I'd just like to announce that there's 55 more days until graduation. You guys come on, see us walk the stage and stuff.
Thank you, sir. No problem. Mrs. Kiefer?
Yes, well, I already said my congratulations to Williams and talked a little bit about the Parent Community Leadership Academy, which I know Cohort 2 will be, soon be looking for Cohort 2, so just to put a plug out there for that. In the spirit of National Volunteer Week, as well as OHS's Seussical Musical that's happening this weekend, I wanted to begin with a quick quote by Dr. Seuss. Unless someone like you cares a whole awful lot, nothing is going to get better, it's not. National Volunteer Week is meant to inspire, recognize, and encourage people to find imaginative ways to engage in their communities. In some way, we give all of our, we all give of ourselves in service to others and in service to our communities. I want to personally thank the many volunteers who not only make our school system thrive, but the volunteers who help our community thrive. It makes our city what it is today, and it makes our city what it can be in the future. There are many ways to volunteer, whether you're part of a PTO or PTA, a student liaison, a community member, there's plenty of ways to volunteer your time. So as Dr. Seuss advises those who care an awful lot, let's continue to work together to make our community even better. I also wanted to not be remiss in acknowledging that it's National Library Week to all of our library workers. It is National Library Workers' Day today, so a shout-out to our school librarians and workers, as well as those in the community libraries. Libraries are the cornerstones of our communities, so just a shout-out there. Round Elementary had a great academic carnival I was able to be a part of. I know Jenny Dean has its second annual Dolphin Dash this Saturday, as well as the OHS City Hall Art Show is coming up on Monday, April 25th. I believe that's at 5:00. So get out there, see all of the good work that's going on. As well as, just lastly, as it relates to volunteerism and community engagement, I know we'll get into it a little bit later, April 21st, 7:00 at Mayfield. We need the community there. We're talking about our schools, we're planning for the future, 2020 to 2030. Come, put your input into this process, be engaged, tell us what you're seeing, what you think, and we'll get more into the details later, but it's just a plug, it's a way to volunteer and to have your voice heard, so please be there. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mrs. Purdy?
Yes, since we're talking about all sorts of things we're commemorating this week and month, something that's kind of near and dear to my heart, it's Children of the Military Month. And a lot of people, if you haven't worn a uniform, probably don't realize that it's a tradition that's been longstanding in the military, that when a person who has served in uniform retires, not only do they recognize that person for their service, but they usually recognize the spouse and the children, because the reality for those kids is when mom and dad are deployed and they're away from home, it's not only a one-parent household, but usually son or daughter has to step up and kind of fill those shoes. And that's especially hard, when these kids are, kind of, the back of their mind is that kind of, all the time really, are mom and dad going to come back home and come back safe? So just kind of, you know, if you know a child whose mom and dad has served in uniform, give them a pat on the back and thank them for their service. So that's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Williams?
No comments, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Sebeski?
Mr. Di Maria, you won't be so lucky here.
Really?
Again, I'd like to thank Williams for the great work they're doing there, and it kind of leads into the somewhat brief comments I want to make. First, one of the things that hasn't been mentioned is that Saturday, the Osborne High School Athletic Boosters are doing their annual 5K race, so if you don't want to do the Dolphin Dash at Dean, or the farmer's market, I think, is also on Saturday, you have something else you can do. It's not too late to register, so you can go online and register and come take part in that. I will be there. I really appreciated Mrs. Kiefer telling us about Volunteer Week, because I do think that volunteers are the heart of any community, and it is obviously something I feel very strongly about, that my children and myself and my whole family participate in the community, because you get out of your community what you're putting into it, and I've met great people and had great experiences as a result of volunteering, and I encourage everyone to do what they're able to do. I know we all have long commutes, but starting with that community engagement on the 21st of April, 7:00 at Mayfield, please, please, mark that date. I know it's springtime, I know there's a lot going on, but it's very important you come out and let your voice be heard. Last week, we did have Mr. Bushnell present, because he's head of finance, our budget to the city council. As people may or may not be aware, the school board has appropriated their funding from the city council. And though those dollars have gone up every year, they've gone up because we have more students in our schools, not because funding has been increased. We've not asked for an increase in funding, but we have asked that they honor the revenue-sharing agreement, so that we continue to get the funding for the agreement that was made in 2009. After we presented our budget, the city council continued to meet for two and a half hours discussing various things. Our revenue-sharing agreement was one of those things that they discussed. I must say that currently, what has been proposed to the city council to discuss is five different options. Only one of those options gives the schools the full revenue-sharing agreement amount that the city council, per the memorandum of understanding, had agreed upon. You, the community, have a voice. If you want public education in the city of Manassas to be funded, and funded at the rate that is expected, then you need to have your voice be heard. The city council will meet upstairs of this building next Monday, the 20th, at 5:30. Some of this will be discussed then, of course not on camera, but then on the 28th, right here in this room, the city council will have a public hearing on the budget. I strongly recommend that any of you that feel that you want public education to be funded in the city of Manassas, that you make sure your voice is heard, either by speaking or by sending emails to our city council. Like I said, one in five options that they may consider, one in five options only keeps our funding at the current level. All the others decrease our funding. Here at the time when we're starting to do great things, as you heard tonight, Williams, one of 24 schools in the nation, but yet, I don't know that they feel that our schools are functioning at a high enough level, but yet they want to cut the funding. Education, public education is important in a community for it to thrive. Please let your voice be heard.
Thank you. If I may, the city council meeting is the 27th, where public comment is.
Oh, I'm sorry, 27th. I apologize.
That's when public comment will be.
Public comment, April 27th. So very sorry.
See, we were listening to you.
I appreciate that.
No problem. Mr. Robert?
So, if someone wants to talk, they should go the 27th, because if they go the 28th, they won't be heard.
No, they won't be heard, yeah. They'll have to talk real loud.
But, you know, we're not here tonight to talk about the budget, or about tax policy, or about buildings.
Okay.
We're here because of what we saw at Williams, we're here about what Mr. Whedon was talking about when he started, we're here about the kids and graduation, and I look forward to a continued countdown of 55 days, 54 tomorrow, to hear a regular report, to see how long it is, because this time of year, and we get the calendar going forward, I always realize that where did the year go, and I see graduation dates already posted, and wow. Onto Mrs. Sebeski's comment to maybe edify a little bit. In 2000, we implemented the first revenue-sharing agreement, and it was a good way of doing business, and in the 15 years since then, a lot has changed in this city. In 2009, we modified jointly with the council at that time, the then-school board, the then-council, to change the percentage in the agreement, and that was the only significant change, so that the city could have a two-cent fire levy. Since that time, the fire levy has quadrupled, and now there's potentially a jail levy. So in addition to all of the changes we have seen as a community with changing demographics, with a changing population, with continued growth in student population and enrollment growth, with continued changes from the state and the federal government on what the mandates are that are not funded, with continuing changes with English as second language, with other kind of challenged populations we have, our revenue-sharing agreement has not kept pace, and potentially, when you talk about that in the fancy buzzword of supplanting, regular money, money intended, potential tax revenue, because I don't know if you call it a levy, or you call it a real estate tax, it's a tax, because we all got to pay it. It's being supplanted from education, and to Mrs. Sebeski's point, people should go and talk to council the way people have come and talked to this body. We have a budget, council's going to work a budget, the community is to speak to see where the community wants to be.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I've got a few things, I've even got a couple written down, I'm going to read them, because I can't do that, we all know we can't do that. Mr. Andy Hawkins, thank you, you look good sitting there. Not as good as our previous finance director, but, you know, that's in my eyes at least. But I'm sure you'll do a wonderful job, and we welcome you to be here. Thank you very much. On April 24th is our Arbor Day celebration at Liberia Plantation at 10:00. If anybody would like to attend that, please do, because it's 10:00 on April 24th, so I probably won't be able to make it, so the more people we gather there, the better. Last Saturday, I'm not going to reiterate what everybody else said, but I agree with everybody else said, but last Saturday, Osborne Football Team, basically, the boosters, but the football team, had their mulch delivery day. They've been selling mulch, and we delivered it all on Saturday. The number of old alumni that were there is overwhelming. The fact that our new football coach, Coach Samuels, was there from 8:00 to 5:00, putting people in his nice car, these dirty football players, delivering mulch, and they deliver it, get back in his car, go back to the school, reload the big truck, and then get their nasty selves back in his car, and follow that truck again and unload, it says a lot about Coach Samuels, and he's starting out on a really good foot. Our previous coach, Coach Hagy, who won't be coaching any longer, was also there with his truck, putting dirty gross kids in his truck and delivering mulch. His bride Nancy was there, checking people in and out. He's no longer going to coach these kids, and it's a testament to who we are that he was there, because it's not about him coaching, it's not about wins and losses, it's about the kids, and the kids needed help, and he was there. Our coach before that, Coach Schultz, was there, running the other forklift. Granted, it's his favorite day of the year, because he gets to run the little forklift, and he thinks he's cool, but he was there from 7:00 till 6:00 or 7:00, doing this work, class of 80, by the way, and just doing wonderful work, and I'm just overly impressed with our kids. We could have used more, we could have used more parents with more trucks, but the kids that were there worked very, very hard, and I was very, very proud of them. There were two other people there, and I'm going to try and get to them here. That was Saturday. Last Wednesday, we lost one of our most important alumna, alumnus, one of the most important people to this city ever. Her full name is Ann Rosler Ratcliffe Herover Thomas. Those of us that knew her knew her as Annie, or AW. Her two daughters were at the mulch sale. On Friday night, there was a visitation at Annie's house. On Saturday morning, Molly and Lisa were checking people in and out for mulch, class of 78, class of 82, I believe. They lost their mother on Wednesday night, suddenly. This wasn't a long-term illness, but they had a responsibility to our kids, and they too were there. Then Sunday, we had Annie's funeral. Then Sunday, we had Annie's funeral, and Lisa had to speak at the funeral. She did a wonderful job. Annie is class of 54. She was a very important part, if not the most important part, to our museum system. She was one of the two or three most important people to our Alumni Association, 109 years old, I believe, the Alumni Association. Annie wasn't that old, class of 54. This last December, the basketball team was in a tournament in Burke. Annie's kids, grandkids, they don't play anymore, but she's 78 years old, and she went to all the games in Burke to support Osborne High School. Whenever you turned around, Annie was involved. The naming of Mayfield was the first committee I was ever on with Annie. And I knew of Annie, she was my friend's mother, you know, but that was 10, 11 years ago, we were on this committee, and you knew her passion, she had all of these possible names. She knew everything about Manassas. She was Manassas. We need to honor people like Annie by continuing to honor Manassas. She was right about Manassas. It's a great place to live. Our schools are a great place for our kids to go to school. Weems demonstrated that tonight, but they're not alone. All of our schools are doing a great job. Annie supported all of our schools. So, if you know Lisa, or Molly, or their brother Chris, tell them you know how important Annie was to our city, and somebody's going to have to step up and try and fill those shoes. It's going to be very difficult. Annie was here a month ago, speaking to us, about the railings, or the lack of railings at our football stadium and at our gym. Well, Mr. Apt and crew, Mr. Hilton, got that done at the football stadium. And on Saturday, as we were loading mulch, you could look over and see those railings. So, when you go to a game, and you walk up those stairs, and you, if you're really, you know, out of shape, and you grab that railing and pull yourself up, think of Annie for me. She was very important to us, and she'll be dearly missed. Thank you. Citizens' comments. I don't have anybody signed up. Does anybody want to speak? Any one of you? Okay, I won't read our speech then. Consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move to the school board of the city of Manassas to adopt the consent agenda as modified.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Sebeski, to adopt the consent agenda as modified. Is there any discussion? Ma'am?
No, I just want to make a special note. You know, it's probably a minor thing, and it's missed by a lot of people, but the contract for providing the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and roofing consultation, they use a really, really shrewd contracting mechanism. They, it's something that folks who do contracting, it's called a base plus options, and that's one of the best ways to get some of the best services and the best deals for the school. So, I just wanted to thank the central office staff for, you know, taking us down that road, because that's going to serve us well over the long haul.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Sebeski. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry 6-0. Discuss an agenda, planning for the future, 2020, 2030.
Yes, Mr. Apt.
Good evening, Chairman Di Maria, School Board, and Dr. McGorick. Manassas City Public Schools staff conducted a request for proposals from outside firms to specifically look at the following: grade configuration study, school facility study, projected enrollment, and a redistricting study. After thorough interviews, staff selected Citygate from Annapolis, Maryland. With us this evening from Citygate are Fred Hajazi, CEO, and Gary Chevalier. They will present the next few slides detailing the scope of work necessary to accomplish the goals for this project.
Welcome, gentlemen. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. Tonight with me is Mr. Gary Chevalier, who was introduced. I'll do a brief introduction about the company and just some of our work. Before I do that, just a brief introduction of myself. I've been with Citygate for pushing 20 years.
Mr. Hajazi, is that correct? We've got some folks watching on television. Can we speak into the mic?
Apologize.
Yeah, we can hear you, but they probably can't. Thank you, sir.
Correct.
Thank you.
As I said, I've been with Citygate for about 20 years. For this project, I also have Gary with me. He is a veteran of the Fairfax County School District, where he worked as the director of planning services. He was with the county for 40 years, and has been doing this quite a bit. I have been doing the districting at all levels for the past 20 years. I did work in the state of Virginia, I've done work in some 25 states, and besides this school district, I'm just about finishing up a similar project in Winchester School District in Virginia. We're actually going to public hearing next week. So, as I mentioned, 28-year-old company, we're basically focused on technology and redistricting, enrollment projections. We also do a lot of bus routing, as well as tools that do public engagement. So, whenever we have one of these plans go to public hearing, we have tools that provide the public the ability to comment on the different plans, and be able to collect all those comments and present them. We've been doing really redistricting at the school level for at least 15 years. We started our work in Montgomery County, we've done work in Fairfax County, Prince William County, city of Richmond, Hartford County, Maryland, city of Madison. We've done work all over the place. We also did the redistricting for the state for both 2000 as well as 2010. We were involved in the congressional and legislative redistricting. So, besides schools, we also do legislative. We actually do water districts, just about any piece of geography that you want to cut up into pieces, we can do it. So, the scope of work is really, starts with conducting a comprehensive facility analysis, looking at how the schools are being used, and looking at improvements that need to be done. That's part of the 2020 to 2030 planning. What we want to do is develop a long-range plan that will allow the school district to both come up with appropriate budgets, as well as a road plan, both for the enrollment projections, how to do different scenarios for the redistricting, and how to bring new Of course, we'll be attending all the public hearings. We'll be working to hold some of these public hearings and collect comments, develop formulas for coming up with capacity, as well as recommendations for how to best make use of the facilities. We're going to be doing enrollment projections based on birth data, forecast by school and division, and look at population growth, as well as the demographics. So, how are the demographics individually changing? What are free and reduced lunch profiles look like as we go forward, based on what they have been in the past, as well as demographic, the changing demographics of the city and the state. This chart gives you a pretty easy overview of what we're going to be doing from start to finish. Really, the first thing for us is to look at creating a database, which for us includes the location of all the students, it gives us projections of where we're going over the next 5, 10, or 15 years, and then developing mapping layers that show that, both for our internal use, as well as being able to show those to the public. Next thing we're going to be doing is the facility evaluations. That's going to include site visits, looking at space utilization plans, and developing a capital improvement project, or plan, I'm sorry. Part of that, of course, is going to be grade configuration, looking at different alternatives, presenting those alternatives, as well as looking at public comments as to how different types of configurations can work for the school district. We're actually doing that right now in the city of Winchester. There is a plan where it's just the traditional, the way that they have it, and then they have one where it goes from, schools are going from 1 to 2, from pre-K to 2, and then 3 and 4. So, we're going to be looking at different alternatives and presenting those to the public and collecting comments. Once the grade configuration is done, we're going to be looking at the attendance area redistricting. We have tools for doing that, both online and on the desktop, so we're going to be working very closely with the school district to create the alternatives, see how the impact appears, as well as the bus routes, present those alternatives both to the school district, as well as the public when the time comes. And once the process is done and everything is accepted, then we start looking at disseminating that information. That really includes creating maps, reports that show how things go forward, supporting any future public hearings, explaining what the new bound, how the new boundaries affect the different schools, and working to modify the transportation plan to fit the new boundaries. And finally, our goal is to transition all of this to the school district. In our work in the past, what we like to do is see that schools take over some of the minor changes in redistricting and projections, and we can provide tools to do that. So, that's ultimately our goal, is to take this school district through the process, and then hand it over in a sustainable way. This gives you a high-level schedule. Our goal was really to do a lot of the work before the school session ended, anything that involved public hearings. Of course, we get a lot more attendance and interest while the school's in session. So, the project is really broken up into two phases. The first one is going to include the development of the databases, doing our field evaluations, grade configuration, doing a lot of the public hearings, and then we're going to do some of the long-range planning and the capital improvement planning over the summer. Starting September, we start with the second phase, which is going to be creating the redistricting, and we're hoping to be done with the entire project by the year's end.
Thank you, Fred. Many of you on the board during your comment time mentioned this important date. The very first community engagement will take place next week, on Tuesday, April 21st, as shown on this slide, at 7:00 p.m. at Mayfield Intermediate School, and we look forward to the Manassas community coming to this event to assist us in these important decisions for our school community. At this time, Citygate and Manassas City Public Schools staff are available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Anyone? Mrs. Purdy?
So, I got to tell you, I'm very pleased with what I'm seeing in the scope of work. I think you're hitting on the types of analysis that we really, really need to drive us over the next 20 years, so that we can have a viable and sustainable long-range plan. So, like I say, it's a good job there. I do have a couple of questions. So, you're developing a long-range facilities plans with recommendations for priority and timing of capital projects, which absolutely is key, particularly from an affordability perspective. Can you just real quickly, you know, don't have to go into a lot of detail, just give a little bit of smattering of kind of what you think the top criteria are for what drives those priorities and recommendations?
I think, I think there are several, actually. I've begun working on the projections, and I can already see that the numbers that we will bring back to you are going to be higher than what you had in your last plan. So, we're certainly going to need to look at how we accommodate increasing enrollment. In terms of the buildings, I had an opportunity today to actually tour all of your buildings, and, Russ, I'm going to tell you that Matt did a fantastic job. The gentleman knows so much about the schools, he's a wealth of information, but I was really impressed with the maintenance and the care that's been given to those schools. You can tell that the system and the community really, really cares about its buildings. I guess to further answer your question, a lot of these schools are 35 years old now, some of them, obviously, 50 years old and older. They need to be brought up to date in many ways. A classroom, it's easy to say a classroom is a classroom, but a classroom really isn't a classroom like it was back in 1970. So, we want to make sure that, first of all, the buildings can accommodate the instructional program that you're trying to bring forward today, and obviously, all the mechanical systems and engineering and so on that has to take place to make sure that the building can do that, and that it continues to have a serviceable lifespan.
Okay.
Albrecht?
Oh, I don't think she was going to.
Oh, you, I thought you said you were done.
Oh, no, I actually had three questions, but, you know, somebody else wanted to, like, weigh in, I didn't want to. So, one of the things that I was also particularly pleased to hear about is this notion of creating alternatives. One of the things that I think we need to pay very close attention to in terms of having this long-range plan is efficiencies, as well as opportunity costs, and the way you bound those two things, and get a sense of what is driving opportunity costs, as well as efficiency, is alternatives. Do you already have a set of established criteria that will underpin, what is the rationale that drives you to bring the alternatives forward, or is that something that you'll figure out later, once you set up your database?
So, there's going to be, when we're looking at a capital improvement, there's going to, of course, be alternatives, because there's costs associated with these. So, for each of these, each of the alternatives, there's a cost, and those are really not going to be our decision at the end of the day, they're going to be your decisions at the end of the day. As far as the redistricting side of it goes, some, I've been doing redistricting for a long time, some things just make sense. When you start laying out a map, there are certain criteria that you have, and there, you come up, there are a million different ways to split it, but there's only a few that make sense. And we typically end up narrowing it down to one or two alternatives, where we end up looking at public support, and we're looking at what makes sense internally, in order to proceed forward with those. So, we try to not have a dozen alternatives when we're looking at redistricting, we try to narrow it down to as few as possible, just because we like to build consensus on the plans moving forward, rather than having a lot of divisive discussions about it. I hope I answered your question.
Thank you.
Can you have one more, Mrs. Purdy?
No, actually, you answered my last question as part of your response.
Well done.
Thank you.
Mr. Albrecht?
Thank you. Really, I have more comments as opposed to questions, and I've only lived in Manassas about 30 years, and about half of that I've actually been on the school board. But, since I've lived in this town, I've heard a lot of people sit on this dais, both representing council and representing the school board, and said, "We're landlocked, we're never going to build another school." That was after we built Round, after we built Mets, after we renovated and expanded the high school, after we built Mayfield, and they're still saying that we're adding it, building a new Baldwin and expanding on it. We have 4,000 students, we've got 7,000. If your enrollment projections come out and say in 15 or 20 years, given the way population trends are going, we'll have 10,000 students, and we still only have 10 square miles, I know we're landlocked, that wouldn't surprise me. And we have to accommodate that change, that change in enrollment, that change in the way instruction is presented, because we don't deliver instruction today the same way we did in 1970, folks, and the buildings have to be renovated, changed, and modified to accept that. The change in demographics, we're teaching things now we've never taught before, and as Dr. McGorick says, today's kindergarten is yesterday's first grade. And the grade levels that you've talked about, I've seen us have four or five different grade-level configurations in the city since I've lived here, so it's certainly something I think we as a community are willing to accept, and what drives it is the way And what drives it is the words you got to, and I appreciate, and you didn't say it, but it's transparency. We're going to engage the community, we're going to do what's right. We're going to figure out what's right for the City of Manassas and our students, and I appreciate that. So thank you.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to make one comment just on my past experience with redistricting. Transparency is key. We've had very bad luck when the school district chose to do this in a closed session and then just threw it at the public, and to the point of having to have the police involved.
Wow.
That is not our preferred way of doing it. We like to be very open. In fact, that was a recommendation we made to the Winchester, and they've been very open, and they've actually scheduled way more meetings than I even recommend, and hopefully it'll end next week. But as I said, that's, I never said no to other meeting, just because I wanted to make sure that anybody who had anything to say would have an opportunity to say it, and I think that's a good model to go with.
Thank you. Anyone else? I have just a couple of things. You'll obviously work with the city to try and figure out their plan for, you know, what they're planning, allowing it to be built, and where, and, back to what Mr. Albrecht said, you know.
We're landlocked.
Well, we are landlocked, but that doesn't mean that we can't go up, or we can't tear down and replace. So I know that's going to be a difficult thing, but I, hopefully, you guys have the experience to try and figure that out, because we haven't been able to. Well, I mean, we're up to 7,500, 7,600 kids next year, and when I started, we had 5,000 or 5,500 or something. That's just eight, nine years ago. So hopefully, you can be successful in engaging the city and finding out at least an idea of where they're going, because I don't know how you could be successful without that. And the other thing I had was basically transparency, details as to why, when it comes to redistricting, because we can do everything absolutely right, and that's what we expect, and we're still going to have some upset people. I mean, that's just, I think that's the way redistricting goes. There's going to be people that don't want to move, they're not going to want to be where they're, we haven't done it for, you've never done it, have you?
No.
So we haven't done it for 15 years at least, probably 20.
Last time it's done was when Round was opened.
I don't even know, that was so long ago, I don't even remember if that was.
25 years ago.
So, um, was it?
Russ knows.
1990, I believe, 899.
Okay. Okay.
So that's 15 years.
And so the transparency is critically important. You're right, you're going to make your recommendations, the final decision will be ours. When the parents and stuff are upset, really, they should be upset at us, but we'll probably try and deflect that at you.
Yes.
So the more details and transparency we have, the easier it'll be to try to explain to folks. You know all of this, I mean, you've done it, but for us, we need as much transparency and details that everybody knows what's going on, there'll be no surprises, and if they're surprised, it can't be our fault. You know, we have to do our very best to get all the information out there. So working with the city and being transparent is critically important, as I see it. Hopefully, you see it clearer than I do, because this is my first time out.
To answer the question regarding the city, so far, they've been cooperative.
Oh, I'm sure.
They've provided us data. We are going to be looking at zoning maps that they have, we've asked them for future development, they're looking into providing us that. So so far, they've been cooperative as best as they can. As far as engaging with them in planning moving forward, I think we are going to do that. Obviously, at the end of the day, the relationship is going to be between the school board, the school, and the city, and how the negotiations happen moving forward. And regarding your other question of needing a shield, I have been in the past hired by school districts that had already completed the plan, they just needed somebody from out of town who would be the target of the stones.
Well, with me, hopefully, you can give us all of the details, and we'll do our best to deflect it to you, but our people will know it's our fault. They'll know. It's our doing, not our fault, but our decision, and we'll take that. But just so we do a good job and we're transparent as all get out. We don't have to have overly meetings, as you think they did in Winchester, but we need to have enough.
Yes.
To make sure that everybody has the opportunity to speak, everybody has the opportunity to give their two cents, and they're very well-informed. That's what we're looking for, I think. Anyone else? Thank you very much, fellas. We appreciate it. And my agenda is, well, we have just an appointment.
New business appointment, yep.
Dr. McGorick?
Yes, we have the appointment of an agent.
We need an agent, you need someone to make a motion, right? Knock yourself out, sir.
Mr. Chair, I move to the school board of the City of Manassas appoint Mr. Paul Hawkins, Executive Director of Finance, as our agent from April 14, 2015, through January 4, 2016, to examine and approve all just claims and to authorize the payment thereof.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Sebeski. Is there any discussion?
Just one, since I didn't say the motion. That's consistent with the Code of Virginia, Section 22.1-122.
Thank you, sir. And I introduce him as Andy, he goes by Andy, but his real name, I assume, is Paul. Okay. Any other discussion? I have a motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Sebeski. Is there any discussion?
Just one, since I didn't say the motion. That's consistent with the Code of Virginia, Section 22.1-122, that the school board of the City of Manassas appoint Mr. Paul Hawkins, Executive Director of Finance, as agent from April 14, 2015, through January 4, 2016, to examine and approve all just claims and to authorize the payment thereof.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry 6-0. I believe our agenda is complete.
Yes.
Somebody?
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
Motion by Mrs. Sebeski, second by?
Second.
Mr. Williams to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry 6-0. I believe our agenda is complete.
Yes.
Somebody?
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
Motion by Mrs. Sebeski, second by?
Second.
Mr. Williams to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry 6-0. Thank you all.